...2021 to order. We will start this morning's meeting with pledges, prayers and pledges. And Tommy Hebert is going to lead us in both. Thank you, Tommy.
Y'all stand, please. Bow your heads with me and your hearts. Dear God, I thank you for another day. Thank you for the community in which we live. I thank you for interested citizens. I would ask, as we conduct our meeting today, that while there be differing opinions, that we express those opinions in a manner of civility and peace and calmness. I want to thank you too for each and every city employee. Oftentimes they are overlooked and oftentimes they are at least verbally abused. I thank you for what they do, for this city, day in and day out, to keep it running, many of whom we know nothing about. We can see some of the results of their work, but I want to thank you for them. And I want to pray all these things in your son's name, who I believe is Jesus the Christ. Amen. If you would pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Tommy. We will now move into the proclamation section of the agenda, and I will come forward. And those who are here to represent the United Way, if you would come forward. Great things happen when we live united. The mission of the United Way of the Concho Valley is to provide the means by which a cross-section of our community may join in a community-wide effort to provide and deliver health and human service programs which address current community needs in a collective and collaborative manner. In 2020, more than 60,000 local Concho Valley residents benefited from the United Way of the Concho Valley contributions through service agencies that provide emergency food and shelter, day and after-school programs for children, mental health services, substance use treatment and prevention, services for victims of child abuse and domestic violence, and many other social services. The objective of the United Way of the Concho Valley is to assist in expansion of or the development of a new service programs, promote preventive activities, and foster cooperation among local, state, and national agencies serving the community. In the face of COVID-19, the United Way is ready to assist all individuals with whatever needs may arise in the city of San Angelo. The city of San Angelo supports the United Way of the Concho Valley, and we ask that you do the same. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunther, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize and applaud United Way of the Concho Valley for its achievement and positive determination to make a difference in our community. And I personally want to thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Gunther. My name is Ashley Ammons, and I am the President/CEO at the United Way of the Concho Valley. And I just want to thank the city of San Angelo for their constant and continuous support of the United Way. It is with, we cannot do what we do without the people of this community across the Concho Valley. As Mayor Gunther said just last year, because of people in this community and all around the Concho Valley, over 60,000 lives were impacted. This is, this is just regular impact. This is not even including winter storm relief, water contamination, COVID-19, all of that what that hit us in the last 18 months. But what I can say is that we are truly grateful because of you, our community partners, are able to answer the call for whatever may arise, whatever social issues may come up. So we are truly, truly grateful for this community, what you continue to do in our almost 100-year history. So on behalf of me, of the staff, our board, donors, volunteers, thank you so much for your continued support of the United Way of the Concho Valley.
If you come forward to offer public comment, state your name and address or SMD area. Each citizen can speak just once per item unless asked to comment by council. Public comment will be for three minutes unless extended by council or translation services. The buzzer will go off at 2 minutes and 30 seconds, meaning you have 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. The proponent/opponent has five minutes unless extended by council or translation services. Council has no obligation to respond to comments or questions from the public. Any response from a member of the City Council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, recitation of existing policy, and directing staff to place a subject on a future agenda. I want to make sure that everyone understands everyone who came here has the opportunity to have a voice. Anyone who boos or harasses anyone who comes forward and makes a comment, we will ask you to leave the room. We open this up for everyone to offer their insight, their comments, and their passion. But we're not here to harass opposing points of view. And I want to make sure everyone understands that. All right. With that, we'll open up public comment. Please come forward.
I'm Paul Shero. I live at 307 North Jackson here in San Angelo, and I'm here concerning the sanctuary city decree. We, we only have so many opportunities in our life to do something that's really important. This is one of those opportunities. This is not only a good thing, it's a holy thing, it's a righteous thing, and it speaks to the best things about San Angelo. The best thing that could happen is for you guys, our leaders, to lead us to take this matter under hand, in hand, and tend to it, put it on the agenda, vote for it, and then we go on with our lives. It's not going away. We're not going away. It's only going to get harder the longer you wait on this thing. If we have to go to a total citywide election, we'll do that, but it will add more discourse and more discord to our community. We're talking about the saving of babies. We're talking about unborn lives. Every one of us that are here, our parents decided that they would keep us and that we would live. It's what we should be doing. It's what you should be doing. And I'm just going to, I'm going to beg you to do what you know you need to do. It doesn't take a unanimous decision, but it does take a decision from you, and this matter will be settled. You know what we want, and you know what this community wants. And let's just do it. This is the thing to do, and I'm going to ask you, please, to do this. I don't know what will come in the future, but I do know that this is an opportunity that we have to stand for right, to stand for good, to stand for what, I mean, we start every meeting here with a prayer. We know what God wants us to do, and we need to, we need to do this. You need to do this. We love you. We want to help you. We support you. We are, we're glad that you are our leaders, but please lead us. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council members. I appreciate your time and for what you do for the citizens of San Angelo. My name is Jamie Rouse, and I live in Single Member District 2. I am also the Associate Pastor at Calvary Baptist Church in San Angelo, which is in Single Member District 3. I would like to go on record as a father, a father of two wonderful children, that I support the ordinance that has become, that has been presented to each of you as written, for San Angelo to become a sanctuary city for the unborn. I've attended the previous two city council meetings, and I've heard arguments for and against this ordinance. But I would like to remind you of what the Bible says about this issue. And there's many things we could say from the Bible, but I've specifically picked out Psalm 139, 13 through 18, in which David writes, "For you created my inmost being; you knit me together in my mother's womb. I praise you, because I am fearfully and wonderfully made. Your works are wonderful; I know that full well. My frame was not hidden from you when it was made in the secret place, when I was woven together in the depths of the earth. Your eyes saw my unformed body. All the days ordained for me were written in your book before one of them came to be. How precious to me are your thoughts, O God! How vast is the sum of them! Were I to count them, they would outnumber the grains of sand. When I awake, I am still with you." These verses tell us unequivocally that every unborn human is known by God even before they were formed, and that God created us in our mother's womb. These verses also say that all of our days are ordained by Almighty God. Who are we to say that it is acceptable to kill these innocent children in the womb that have been ordained by God to live a full life? Finally, these verses tell us that God's thoughts are precious. Madam Mayor, City Council members, the Bible clearly tells us God's thoughts about killing unborn babies in this passage, as well as many other passages throughout the Bible. But I will leave you with a verse about the authority of God in all matters, Galatians 6:7. Do not be deceived; God cannot be mocked. A man reaps what he sows. Please sow life for the unborn babies of San Angelo. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Holcomb. I live in District 3, and I want to say briefly, Mayor Gunther, thank you so much that you respond and answer and listen when we reach out to you. I'm not here to talk about abortion. I'm here to talk about being pro-life. Pro-life refers not simply to supporting the embryo in the womb, but standing up for the black child who's afraid to walk down the city street. It's fighting to save the life of the inmate on death row. Pro-life is sheltering and feeding the homeless person on the street, welcoming the migrant family at the border. Pro-life is supporting and accepting the LGBTQ teenager that contemplates suicide because their own family will not accept them for who they are, the families that cannot afford basic health care. Pro-life is feeding the children whose only daily meal is the free lunch that they get at school. Being pro-life means pro-all lives. Otherwise, you are just pro-birth. And being merely pro-birth is ensuring that tomorrow there will be more children whose only meal comes from the school lunch program. There'll be more teen suicide, more homeless, more prisoners who sit on death row, and more black children who fear walking down the street. If you want to be known as a sanctuary city, be a sanctuary city for all lives, not just embryos. Pro-choice is pro-life. Thank you for listening.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. And my name is Amy McGinnis, and I live at 518 East 38th Street in District 2, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you this morning. I'm another story this morning before you of the pain and regret of a decision to have an abortion 32 years ago. I have been forgiven. I have been healed, and I now pray for the opportunity every time I can to speak for the lives of these children. The choice that I made back then had a ripple effect, and it does affect our community, and it affects our community spiritually, economically, in the degradation of the family. So while those that are opposing this ordinance may speak of pro-life in other ways, the effects of the harm and the damage done to an individual like myself, the children, the mothers, the families that are affected by these abortions is long-term. Literally two years ago, I discovered things that had happened to me after that, that I did not recognize at the time, alcohol abuse and some other things such as that. So when we talk about bettering our community, we're also speaking economically about drug and alcohol abuse, our criminal justice system, domestic violence, all those things play into what happens from the damage and harm and shame that comes from a choice made in a moment. So one of the things the opposition has said is, where are we after those babies are born? I agree. Those are conversations to be had, and we need to come to the table to find those real solutions. But today, we need to take step one, and you have had the opportunity now to place this ordinance on the ballot and vote for the, for San Angelo to become a sanctuary city for the unborn. And I'm here to support that and ask you to vote yes for that, so that we can be a sanctuary city for our town. One last thing that I would like to do this morning is introduce you to my daughter, Shelby Joy. Unfortunately, this is the only way that I can introduce her to you, and I would ask you to look at her, look at her representation this morning, to know this was a little life that would have turned 32 years old this month. Thank you for your time. We're praying for you, and we support you. Please pass this ordinance.
My name is Sharla in Astrosa, and I live at 113 Los Lomas Drive out in Los Lomas Estates. And I thank you for letting us speak our minds, and I thank you for the work that you do here in our city. I was adopted at birth before Roe v. Wade, and four people in my family were adopted. And because I was given a chance at life, I grew up, and I was blessed with a family of my own. And then my children grew up, and they were blessed with families of their own. And I'm a really visual person, and so here's a picture of 11 people, 11 people. And see, this is me, my son, my daughter, and their children. But if abortion had been legal when I was adopted, I might not be here. And maybe you think, well, it's just one life. Does it, does it really matter? Well, see, this is the picture you would see if I hadn't been born. Just emptiness, 11 lives not here. Because adoption doesn't just save one life, it saves generations of lives. So on the other hand, abortion doesn't just end that one life, it ends generations of I know that sometimes people get in a situation, and they have a hard time, but we don't hear about adoption anymore for the human babies. We only hear adoption for the animals. And I think it's time that we start talking about adoption, because sometimes when someone is facing a crisis pregnancy and they are not able to keep their baby, maybe they don't want to choose abortion, but they haven't heard enough about adoption and that it is a loving and selfless act. And if you go on, it's crazy in our world, but if you go on the computer, onto the internet, and you look up number of abortions, they actually have abortion counters. So I printed this off this morning, and the clock just keeps ticking, ticking. You're looking at it, and these babies are just dying. But one thing I wanted to show you, that's another visual.
You need to wrap up your.
Okay. After, this year, after 16 weeks gestation, just this year, 31,533 babies have died. This is a fetal model of a baby at 16 weeks. So we need to all understand that they're not just a clump of cells. Thank you so much.
My name is Ashley Leonard, and I'm from Austin, Texas, but San Angelo is my hometown. I grew up at Wall and went to Angelo State University. So I'm not a random person coming here. That's been like talked about on the media, which I think is funny. But anyway, today I want to ask y'all a question. I know you love San Angelo, and I love San Angelo, and that's why I'm here. But do you agree, or do you think that innocent human lives should be protected? Because that's the real question here, and I want everyone in this room to think that. Do innocent human lives deserve protection? And at minimum, do innocent human lives deserve to not be gruesomely killed? That's just the real question that we're asking. Are there reasons for innocent human lives to be killed, whether through poison, being ripped apart, or suctioned apart? Those are the ways a baby dies in abortion. And if we don't know that the baby is a human or not, that's where we need to establish. Is this baby a human? Because if the baby is a human before they're born, that preborn child is a human, that's what the abortion argument is making. We're either saying that there are reasons that we can kill innocent human beings, or this baby isn't a human and it's just reproductive rights, it's just a woman's choice. But if that baby's a human, we're making arguments for why there are humans that deserve to be killed. Well, since 1973, that has been the argument that media, politicians, and abortion advocates have been making. They've been saying that it's not a human. But I want to tell y'all today, from the moment of conception, that baby has over 200 unique traits already established, their hair color, their eye color, their gender, their ethnicity. This is all established, and it's not the same as the mother's. The mother might be female XX chromosome, her baby could be a boy XY chromosome. The mother could be white, her baby could be half-white, half-whatever other ethnicity. The baby is not the mother. The baby is a human being at the earliest form of human development. And so if this baby is a human being, and we can say that from the very moment of conception, then we either need to say that we are saying that there are reasons why we can kill innocent human beings, or there are not reasons why we will stand for the killing of innocent human beings. And one of the first reasons that you'll hear someone argue whenever they're making the abortion argument is that because the baby is dependent on the mother, then that baby does not deserve life. Let's think about that for a moment. If this is a human being, if we're dependent on another, do we deserve life? How many in this room are children dependent on another? How many of us have someone that is dependent on medicine or that's in the hospital? And if we're elderly, we're dependent again. So is dependency a reason to not deserve life? What about size? What about abilities? What about race? What about poverty? All of these reasons are reasons people will use that a baby doesn't deserve life, but they are just as human. So today, I want to ask you to please place on your next city council agenda the Sanctuary City for the Unborn ordinance and vote to protect all innocent human life. If we're not going to protect innocent human life, or if we're going to advocate for abortion, we're advocating for reasons we will allow innocent humans to be killed, and that is not what we want to do in San Angelo. We want to protect our city and the people we love. Thank you.
Well, good morning. I'm Bobby Roger. I reside at 701 East 24th Street. I just want to share a thought with you from the scripture. You know, we know that God is a loving God and merciful God, and I'm so grateful for that, and I'm sure you are too. Believe it or not, the Bible does list seven things that God hates in the Book of Proverbs, chapter 6. And one of the things that God hates is hands that shed innocent blood. And there's nothing more innocent, as this last speaker just shared, than the life of a baby inside the womb, about as innocent as you can get. And I know that none of us, none of you on this council have ever been personally involved in performing an abortion, but we have an opportunity, passing this ordinance, to stop the shedding of innocent blood in San Angelo and kind of give it in God's favor. So I want to just encourage you to do that. Let's, let's protect the unborn here in San Angelo. Pass this ordinance, get it on there, and I appreciate you doing that. God bless you.
My name is Anna Martine, and I'm in District 5. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the citizens in San Angelo who believe that the First, Ninth, and Fourteenth Amendments to the Constitution guarantee our right to choose. I want to start by saying that it is fake news that we are outsiders, when in fact, Markley Dixon and Anthony Agaro, who are stirring things up that create echo chambers in the conservative right-wing community, are not from San Angelo. In fact, they jet-set around the state and country on donors' funds, stirring up problems in communities they do not live, work, or serve in. And being that these influencers are January 6th insurrection terrorists, I find it difficult to believe that the Christians of this community would blindly follow them. This brings me to my next point, that some citizens would have you believe that this is a faith issue, when in fact, there are Christian congregations and leaders in our community that do not believe in taking away a woman's right to choose. The difference is, these proponents have been fleeced by people who claim to believe in life from conception to natural death, which I guess doesn't include preventing natural death with medical equipment and techniques, as in the case of COVID and burn victims on ventilators. Meanwhile, Genesis verse 2, chapter 7 disagrees, stating, "We are living humans upon first breath." Roe v. Wade doesn't even agree, as it does not require abortion on demand until birth, rather until 24 weeks or until life-saving measures are necessary. This brings me to biology. Senate Bill 8 currently caps abortion at the embryonic stage and does not give women six weeks from knowledge of pregnancy, but from last menstruation. This means women can be prevented from choice before they even know they're pregnant and before there are heart valves to even beat. But you know whose hearts are beating? The near 16,000 foster and 3,000 adoptable children in Texas and the 120,000 adoptable U.S. children, which I hardly think qualifies as a shortage. So perhaps this is not the issue. As we know, these citizens don't believe in telling someone what to do with their body, right? They cannot be told to wear a mask, get a vaccine, cannot be forced to donate blood or organs, right? Well, then perhaps the issue is demographic change and the birthed earth in Texas. Perhaps these right-wing insurrectionists are recruiting in towns and playing on the fear of conservative people becoming the minority in the near future. And perhaps their fear would be unnecessary if the current majority wielded their power with prejudice, without prejudice, dishonesty, and injustice. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Julie Green Pilgrim, and I have no fancy words, but I have a heart that says, I praise God that abortion was not allowed when my son was born. Due to medical issues, I was unable to have children of my own. I adopted my son at birth. I carried him out of the hospital, and I've loved him for 37 years. Six years ago, he had a child that went to heaven as soon as it was born, and nine months later, we were able to adopt. I'm a grandmother now. I would not have ever been a mother or a grandmother if this would have been an option for the mother, the biological mother of my child. I praise God every day for that heartbeat that he placed in me when he gave me a child, when he gave me a grandchild. As chaplain of the county jail for 20 years. As chaplain of the county jail for 20 years, I did many counsellings of women that had had abortions and all of the pain that they went through. One of the saddest ones was not an abortion, but a woman that miscarried at about 13 weeks. She called me from the hospital and asked me to come, and I went, and I held that little baby in my hand. It was perfectly formed. It was a beautiful child. It had life until something happened in the womb. But my point is, please pass this and make us a city that does not believe in abortion. Please, there are so many mothers out there, and maybe the adoption laws need to be changed a little. I don't know. If there are babysitter adoptable, let's make it where they can adopt a little easier. Mine was private, so it was good. But my point is, please, don't take another life. I held that little baby's form in my hand, and I will never, as long as I live, forget how well it was formed at such an early age. I beg of you to make this city a sanctuary city. Thank you and God bless you.
My name is Ryan Maskill. I reside at 1417 Webster Street under District Four. Before I get started with what I had originally written, I do just want to mention that all of the previous women that had spoke before me had choices that were afforded to them, choices that they were able to make. What is going on right now is people are trying to take those choices away from future women, women that don't walk that same life, because not all of us follow the same faith and not all of us come from the same walks of life. We all experience different things. Might I also quote Numbers 5:27? "If she has made herself impure and been unfaithful to her husband, this will be the result. When she is made to drink the water that brings a curse and causes bitter suffering, it will enter her, her abdomen will swell, and her womb will miscarry, and she will become a curse." God also gave us the choice, the ability to make our own choices, and says, "Judge not lest ye be judged." He also drew a line in the sand and said, "Those without sin cast the first stone." I am here today to speak on the proposed sanctuary city ordinance. At the last city council meeting, a gentleman spoke about the council board voting directly on the ordinance and bypassing a vote by the citizens. His reasoning was, he believed that everyone, except for a few residents, wanted the ordinance for San Angelo. That to have the board pass this ordinance would avoid other worldviews in the eight months between now and the vote. When we speak of worldviews, we need to remember that we all come from different walks of lives and different faiths, and not two of those are the same. I can tell you now that there are more than just a few who are against this proposed ordinance. This weekend, I, along with many others, participated in the local women's march that was part of a larger nationwide event. We marched, we spoke, and we listened to each other. There were so many different reasons why not only Senate Bill Eight should be repealed, but also why the local proposed ordinance wasn't a good option either. The one reason we all carry him back to was that what happens to our bodies should always be our choice. As much as I personally wish this ordinance wasn't an option, that's not possible anymore. I'm simply here to ask you that y'all put this to a vote, to the citizens, so we as citizens can make our choice be heard and our choice is a voice. Thank you.
My name is Joanna Sandor. I am the Director of Administration at the Stevie Biblical Counseling Center on Freeland Avenue, and we just purchased a home at 4013 Caroline in District One. I have been pro-life my entire life. I grew up in a conservative Christian home, but I always thought that it was about the babies. What I've learned from our post-abortion counselor is that it's about the women, that I'm here to fight for the women, the ones who think that they have no choice, the girls who are told that they have no other choice besides abortion. They got pregnant underage and they have to go get an abortion. I know that women who that has happened to, and now as adults, they highly regret that their parents made them make that decision. It's important to remember that Roe v. Wade was passed before ultrasounds or used in prenatal capacities. Women aren't allowed to see their babies in their wombs before they get an abortion. That is hidden from them. They don't know that their babies are in there moving around. Despite the passionate comment today and last week about overcrowded child welfare system, abortion is not the answer. Adoption, birth control education, and we the church are just a few of the answers. I know there are many couples out there that cannot have children of their own, that would have an opportunity to, who would love to have an opportunity to save a baby from abortion through adoption. These women don't know the pain that they're choosing. There is no counseling prior to an abortion. Planned Parenthood does not say, "Do you really understand the decision that you're going to make for the rest of your life? And your mother, does she know you're going to have an abortion? And your father? And how about the baby's father? How about your sister? Your brother?" The family instead finds out later, and they are heartbroken, or if they find out. They don't always find out, and they are heartbroken. Can you imagine how you would feel if your daughter or niece or nephew would come to you and say they had an abortion years ago? It would break your heart. I know I would feel the same way. I would be heartbroken. And then siblings of the babies as well are heartbroken. This just, abortion, abortion compounds pain upon pain upon pain. And I'm asking you today to put a vote to make San Angelo a city, to pass the ordinance to make San Angelo a sanctuary city for the unborn on the ballot today, the agenda today or next meeting. Thank you. And we are praying for y'all on this decision and all decisions. All right? Thank you.
I don't live in a district, outside of city limits unfortunately. I'm here today to request the unborn sanctuary plan to not be voted on by anyone and to be completely dropped. There are many more important and reasonable steps to take before the possibility of decreasing the number of abortions, as in requiring proper sexual education in our schools, easier access to birth control, adoption and foster care reform, since Texas is still in a lawsuit over our foster care system currently. Better pay for social workers whose caseloads are already too heavy. All of those things would help our living and breathing children. Should that not be our main focus? Shall we repeat our history? Have we forgotten all the women who died from back alley abortions? Or all of the newborns that have been left on the side of the road? Or even the babies that were unwanted and have been and are still being abused by their parents, biological and adoptive? We need to take care of our living and breathing citizens first. Furthermore, due to the time of the meetings, I don't believe you'll have gotten to hear enough opinions from the majority of San Angelo's population. The majority age group is between 25 and 44 years old. If these meetings were more accessible to that age group, I think you'd see they don't agree with the pro-life advocates here today. But I won't attempt to speak for others as they have done for us. I will only speak for myself, a woman who had her first child at 16, and a mother of four daughters who deserve every chance in the world. I would like y'all to put your religion aside and your religious opinions aside from this opportunity. In this, in our states, we have the freedom of religion, and using your religion to go against all the other religions out there is unconstitutional. Thank you.
San Angelo's been my hometown since I was in the second grade. I've heard that the overcrowding of foster care and the general dysfunction of families should leave us as, we should be more open-minded to more abortion. I personally find that absurd. I've never had somebody complain to me about their spouse, or their child, or their neighbor, and say, "Well, then the solution should be we should kill them." You know, that can't be a reasonable solution. There certainly are many challenges in our community and in our country, and they need real solutions. It's a huge problem. If the concept that pro-life people were only pro-birth, that would be horrible. That's not right, but it's also not true. That's a false statement. I am thankful that the same people who proposed the Heartbeat Act also pushed and got $100 million approved by the state of Texas for the next two years to be spent as an alternative to abortion to support. Our state will be supporting families, mothers, fathers, children, not just pre-birth, but for these families, the crisis that we're facing, which is real. I'm thankful for the local citizens who've put together our Pregnancy Resource Center and our biblical counseling services, because it's not, it can't be just we only want to keep people to generate more babies. We have to support these families. I'm thankful for the biological mother of my own children, who when faced with crisis pregnancies, chose to not kill my daughters, but to deliver them. I'm thankful that through foster care and the court system, I was able to adopt these daughters and raise them and love them as my own. Adoption is hard. Life is hard. There are so many challenges. My heart breaks for all of the situations, but killing these babies can't be the solution. We have to save all of the families and come up with more actual solutions. In this town, we don't even want our animal shelter to kill. That's okay, that's fine, but surely we want to do more than give more opportunity for death by dismemberment to our youngest citizens. There are many medical procedures that are not available in San Angelo, Texas. We know that. How many of us have people that are shipped off to Dallas for more medical care? But nobody is walking around with signs saying, "We must have heart transplants in San Angelo." If somebody wants an abortion, let them go somewhere else. I love that San Angelo can close the door for death by dismemberment for unborn children. Thank you.
I'm Patty Tharp, 503 Wanda. I'm not here to support pro-life or pro-choice. I'm here as a resident of San Angelo, Texas. Since abortions are not available here, we do not even have it Planned Parenthood, and before, Planned Parenthood did not provide abortions. So why is it necessary to label our city with the sanctuary city? This is only causing division. Our city, our state, and our country needs to be working to find ways to unite, not divide. So why are we considering a moot issue? It's not going to, we don't have abortion, so we're not trying to stop it here. Mr. Thomas, I voted for you, and I agree, we don't need to have an election. We voted for all of you, and we trust that you won't, that you will do what is best for our city of San Angelo. And that's to let this issue go and get back to the real business of the city. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Buck. I live at 10042 Floyd Lane. It's a pleasure to speak to you again. And not to disparage the madam that just spoke, Mr. Thomas, we are very grateful for you and your courage. And I just want to ask for more courage from our council members. Obviously, this is, you know, a very difficult and contentious issue, and as difficult as it is for us to stand up here and speak to you, I can only imagine how tough it is to sit there every meeting and listen to all of us here, but I'm grateful that you've made the decision to do it. I just am coming to you asking for courage because I am concerned about an issue. I know that you will go into executive session later on this morning, and you will hear from the city attorney. I don't know the city attorney well, but I'm aware that there have been more than one cities in San Angelo or towns that the city council and that the mayor were in favor of the ordinance, but our city attorneys in other places have shut it down. And I just encourage you to take the ordinance that we have provided. I encourage you to take remembrance of the letter that was sent to the city council and the mayor in June, offering free legal counsel from Jonathan F. Mitchell in case a city is sued, directly addressed to San Angelo. I encourage you to take heart in that and to pass this ordinance on the agenda with an up and down vote. If it fails, it fails. But we ask for leadership on the issue. If, like some of my friends have said, and also those that oppose us, if it has to go to a ballot, we're ready for that. But as we speak right now, there is a judge that was appointed by the Obama administration that is considering putting a stay on the Heartbeat Bill, because the United States Justice Department is suing San Angelo also this past month. The House of Representatives proposed a bill to actually ban abortion. Right now, it's just Roe v. Wade keeps criminal enforcement from being in place, but they're in, from conception all the way to birth. It is encroaching upon us. That's the reason we've brought it up. It's not because we just want a culture fight here. We don't. But we want to preserve what San Angelo is. And so I ask that you would please consider this matter, put it on the agenda for an up and down vote. Thank you very much for your time.
If you would please hold the timer for a moment while I fix a tripping hazard left by our precious little one that was up here. Thank you. Greetings, Madam Mayor, City Council. I am John Barrio. I reside at 2323 Wilson Street. Councilman Tom Thomas is sworn to represent District Two in this assembly. December 23rd, 1776, Thomas Paine wrote a piece titled, "The Crisis." These words of guidance for those facing decisive turning points are poignant today. "These are the times that try men's souls. The summer soldier and the sunshine patriot will, in this crisis, shrink from the service of their country, or in this case, city. But he that stands by it now deserves the love and thanks of man and woman. Tyranny, like hell, is not easily conquered. Yet we have this consolation with us, that the harder the conflict, the more glorious the triumph. What we obtain too cheap, we esteem too lightly. It is dearness only that gives everything its value. Heaven knows how to put a proper price on its goods." This council will soon meet this morning behind closed doors to seek the legal advice for this life and death matter. We the people are not privy to that closed meeting, nor what will be shared there, pardon me. Yet each of these council meetings is opened with a prayer, often by your chaplain. I ask, have you sought his biblical counsel in this matter? I ask, have you sought his Biblical counsel in this matter? And ultimately, have you asked God for his counsel, guidance, and direction on this? To have neglected in doing so would be demonstrative hypocrisy. I ask you to weigh this personally and prayerfully before casting your votes, should a vote be taken after the closed session. Be reminded that each of you actively sought, were elected, and now are sworn to be this council for the city of St. Angelo. While you seek advice on this matter behind closed doors, you are not bound to whatever was rendered there. Your, pardon me, your assembly will then return to open meeting, and your promises of transparency will be fulfilled or found hypocritical. Some here profess as taught in Joshua 24:15, "But I serve the Lord," pardon me, "but if serving the Lord seems undesirable to you, then choose for yourselves this day whom you will serve, whether the gods of your ancestors serve beyond the Euphrates, or the gods of the Amorites in whose land you are living. But for me and my house, we will serve the Lord." Who among you has ascribed to that?
Wrap it up, please.
I just have a few more comments. Who among you has ascribed to that, "But as for me and my household, we will serve the Lord?" I am not the judge, but rest assured, judgment will come. Remember as well Revelations 3:15 and 16. "I know your works, and you are neither hot or cold. I could wish you were hot or cold. So then, because you are lukewarm and neither cold nor hot, I will vomit you out of your mouth, out of my mouth." These are the times that try men's souls.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking a worthy vote this evening, or this morning.
My name is David Sadio. I've been born and raised in St. Angelo my entire life. I'm a member of District Three, and I just have a few words I wanted to say. First, I want to start off by saying I've heard a lot of religious sentiment here, and I've grown up in a very religious household, and I know that religion is very important to people. And I respect everyone's religion, and I will fight to the death to make sure that people can be able to express their religious beliefs freely, without persecution, and with the fundamental rights that we all deserve. With that being said, our Constitution was written in with a specific separation of church and state. So with that, I really find it a little unnerving that that is the justification behind a lot of these policies, because while I feel like you should be able to express those rights and have those rights, and I will defend those rights, I don't think you should be able to impose those rights on other people just because that's how you believe and how things should be. And I think we're looking at this week in St. Angelo, we can also see that a lot of people have the same sentiment. At the local Women's March, there was about 100 people there, all expressing sentiments that they wish to have their own control over their own reproductive freedom, and that those things are very important to them, and that this issue in St. Angelo isn't a one-sided issue. It is a very multifaceted issue. It is a very complex issue. And I think what a woman brought up previously before me is probably the most important point I've heard all day, is that a lot of these issues that we're facing are only a problem because of the economic hardship that families face. The fact that families feel like they're in such a rough spot and rough decision that they have to make choices against either maintaining the child or getting rid of the child. Those are awful situations that nobody wants to be put in. And I think, and especially in our modern society where we have such a material abundance, and we have the capacity to create huge industrial machines and huge industrial mechanisms to push society forward, is that was what we should be doing with our society. We shouldn't be over here fighting about this or that social issue. We should be making sure that everybody has the material conditions to be able to produce a happy life for their family and have complete sustainability. And I wanted to wrap up with a quote, and it's a quote from a Russian worker. "Women cannot achieve real liberation until their own reproduction is under their own control." Thank you.
Hello. My name is Michaela Harfelter. I live at 1645 Sunset Drive. So some interesting comments that I've heard today, like David said, is that a lot of the issues that are being brought up are being brought up on a religious basis. The United States was not found on both church and state being one. From the very beginning of its conception, the United States was a place where people who are of a different religious faith could come and could still experience different freedoms. That is not happening right now. At this time, we are facing a crisis in the fact that women are not allowed to make their choices over their bodies because of someone else's religious beliefs. Another fantastic point that was brought up earlier is the fact that St. Angelo was never a city where abortion was attainable. So why would we indeed make that a certainty to where it's a sanctuary city and it was never a problem to begin with? That's not something that I think is a valid point to be brought up. Women's choice is exactly that. It is her body. The human fetus cannot survive outside of the body before 24 weeks without extreme medical intervention. If a person or a human fetus is brought outside of the body before that point in time, most likely, the issues that it will face growing up will be incredibly difficult, and it will not have a long and fulfilling life, instead it will have a short and painful one. So why would you continue to ask that we bring these people into a being where it's going to be painful and short and leave them mostly in debt or their families in debt? There are many, many children in the Texas foster care system that are looking for homes, including babies. Please don't make it to where those children don't have a chance anymore by making St. Angelo a sanctuary city. That is all.
My name is Candace Cooksey Fulton. I'm single.
You can pull that microphone down so you don't have to be uncomfortable.
I just learned the other day I'm shrinking. So, my name is Candace Cooksey Fulton. I live in Singletonburg, District Three. I am here today giving my opinion on St. Angelo becoming a sanctuary city for the unborn. First of all, there hasn't been an abortion clinic in St. Angelo for about 20 years. There isn't even a Planned Parenthood where women can go to get free or reasonably priced birth control. Secondly, despite SB eight, abortion without government interference is a constitutional right allowed by the Fourteenth Amendment. There is not a precedent where a municipal government has the option of overriding the Constitution. We are supposedly here today as good Christians to protect the rights of the unborn. It's easy to run out the high moral ground with words like sanctuary, and easier still to stand up for those who can't talk and have no demands on our society as long as they're inside the womb. Meanwhile, we can sit in our church pews in city council meetings, do nothing, and call ourselves a sanctuary. Not one place in the Bible has the word abortion ever used. There are, by one count, 42 verses cautioning against judging others. A particular favorite is Matthew 7:2, "For in the way you judge, you will be judged." It will be measured, in the standard of your measure, it will be measured to you. And wasn't it Jesus Christ Himself who drew a line in the sand just before a woman was to be stoned and said, "Let he who is without sin cast the first stone?" I personally chose not to have an abortion. In my darkest moment of anguish, fear, and uncertainty, I was thankful I had a strong faith, an education, and an almost good-paying job. I had the opportunity and privilege of believing things would be okay. As a grandmother and soon-to-be great-grandmother, I realize too few have those assets and privileges. Why can't St. Angelo be a sanctuary city for those women who struggle, are too young, too old, too poor, too beaten down, too not ready? Why, instead of judging them with our coulda, woulda, shoulda, and by our own experience, we offer them sanctuary? I don't know of any woman who has ever chosen abortion. I know of a few who forced to make that decision because they believed they didn't have a choice. I know of others who in their third trimester learned their baby wasn't developing a brain or vital organs and wouldn't survive outside the womb. Now, because of SB eight and because those critically deformed babies have heartbeats in utero, their mothers would, will be forced to carry them to term. I also know of babies who were born with severe cases of fetal alcohol syndrome, crippling defects, minimal life expectancies. I am not saying they should have been aborted. I'm saying those children are without sanctuary in our city.
I'm in St. Angelo, but I'm new to St. Angelo. I do not know my district, but I live at 1714 Hudson Oaks. And I am disabled, and a lot of people say, "Get rid of the child because the child is disabled. They're not going to have a good quality of life." I am here to tell you, because of my parents and my siblings and my relatives, I have heard a good life, and I believe that every child who is disabled, they say, "Just get rid of them because you're not worth having." We are worth having. We give something to society, so please, support the sanctuary city, to support the children that people don't want, but some people do want, and people do love, and we do make a difference as disabled people. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
My name is Norma Perry. I'm from Singletonburg, District Five. I have to say, I have the highest regard for the sanctity of life, a life after viable birth. So many of the people who've spoken before me have taken so much of what I want to say, I don't want to repeat that, but I've never been in the gut-wrenching place to have had to have an abortion, but I once thought-
Someone's cellphone needs to be turned off. Thank you.
But I once thought that that was a possibility for me. After I had children, it was not a choice for me, but I refused to take that choice from others. As I left the other day, one of the higher-minded women said to me, "Birth control. Planned Parenthood has free birth control." Well, I hate to say this, but St. Angelo no longer has Planned Parenthood, not here. The oblivious petitioners are obviously don't know that. St. Angelo no longer has Planned Parenthood, thanks to people like themselves who used to position down the street from my home. One petitioner spoke of the guilt of someone else he knew experienced an abortion. Second-hand testimony is inadmissible in court, but why not here? So we must not take those kinds of comments into consideration. Studies indicate that not guilt, but relief is felt by most women. Not a decision made lightly. It has touched my family closely on more than one occasion, and yes, it is saddening to me. But again, it was not my decision to make, nor should it be yours or anyone else's here. This issue has no place on any city's agenda. It is an extremely personal decision that should be made between a woman, her physician, and her God. Petitioners are a minority in St. Angelo who will not be affected by the actions they propose. On 20, 9/20, there were not many women of childbearing age in this forum because they couldn't come. Afterwards, many women opposed to this proposition on social media said they couldn't come due to working or taking care of families they already have. These proceedings are unfair representations of that group because they can't come to these meetings. So I say that we should have these meetings in the evening where perhaps those people can represent themselves. That has been done on prior occasions, and I think it's worthy of thought this time. We need to have separation of powers. Religion should not mix in politics, and I've heard a lot of religious rhetoric today, and that was that, religious rhetoric. Every petition brought forth before-
If you could wrap it up, please.
I will wrap it up. I will not read to you out of the Bible. Every petition brought forth is not worthy of action. The city council needs to bow out of this issue and focus on maintaining the infrastructure of St. Angelo. And for your comments, I am a Christian, age seven. Thank you.
My name is Jerry Peters, and I live in Mertson. I am Pro-Life Director for the Diocese, or Catholic Diocese of St. Angelo. I come from a very large family of eight siblings, of which I am the eldest. My wife and I have two daughters and seven grandchildren. I have 52 nephews and nieces. Out of these are three CPSs, an airline pilot, a registered nurse, a school superintendent, DJs, postal workers, communication workers, construction workers, and six that have served in the military in defense of our country. None of these individuals would exist if my mother decided to abort us. Now imagine, if just one-fifth of this number, say, 10 individuals, if you multiply that times the 62 million births, or babies, that have been killed since Roe v. Wade, we come up with the unimaginable, unimaginable number of 630 million potential families. Ladies and gentlemen, that is an entire continent. I, for one, do not want to waste, wait for a ballot to add to this number. Many of our opponents say that this is my body. I have the right to decide what to do with my own anatomy. Mine might pertain to cars, houses, boats, land, livestock, pets, or other things that we possess, but not our bodies. Our bodies belong to God, and only He has the power to create life and to take life. If a couple could take a chemistry set and get their ingredients together over a Bunsen burner and create a child in their kitchen like they would be preparing a lunch, then they would have the right to that life because only then would they be the Creator. In John's Gospel, Chapter 19, verse 10 and 11, Pilate said to Jesus, "Do you not know I have the power to release you or crucify you?" Jesus said, "You would have no power over me if it had not been given to you from above." You, as leading citizens or members of our community, have the power to get this resolution on the agenda, to make the city of St. Angelo a sanctuary city for the unborn. Sometimes, we have to go against the grain to do what is right. God bless you and thank you for all you do for the city of St. Angelo.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmen. We thank you all for being so patient with us and listening. It really means a lot, and you guys are demonstrating the whole reason of the birthing of America. And that's what the Lord put on my heart to share with you, the choice that people had to come to America, establish it, so that was the birthing of America. And the birthing of America means that we all get to have choices. We all get to represent. The establishment of the amendments and the Constitution is for life, life and liberty and the pursuit of happiness. And so we are here just to come and believe for the choice, the choices that even you guys made. I pray for each one of you all because you guys have a passion to lead our city, and that passion is important to us as we voted. Larry Miller is my councilman. My name is Juanita Brown. I live at 4845 Bermuda. Sorry, I got excited. But we appreciate all of the representation that you guys, you guys are so personable, will come up and speak to me. I mean, we have the incredible leadership, and I appreciate your choices to having the passion to lead St. Angelo in areas of solution. I think I've heard that a couple of times as I've come. I think I've heard that a couple of times as I've come, is that we're solution-minded. And I did a, just a study about, right now, the trucking industry. There's a shortage, and by 2024, there will be a 300-person shortage. And the statistics of those truckers are the age of 45 and over. Well, since Roe versus Wade, we would have had, been able to have the solution because all of those babies would have been 45 years old. So in 2024, they said it's going to be 300,000 shortage, so it's going to affect all of us. It's going to affect commerce, it's going to affect industry, it's going to affect jobs, it's going to affect livelihood. And so we are here today just to thank you all for the choices you make. Thank you for considering San Angelo to be a sanctuary city for the unborn. Thank you for being solution-minded, because that is what we're here for. And I left my house because I had this book on my, and it's a pilot. Her name is Elizabeth McCormick. Thinking about our military and the choices that most of, a lot of you have made to serve our country, that choice brought us freedom. So I am here today to be a voice for the, for the babies, and the choice should be, for me, looking back, because I had a baby and abortion, and I had other babies, but abstinence and birth control, abortion is not a birth control method. And so I am here today to tell you that there is ill effects to abortion. There is things that affected my livelihood as a person of the community of San Angelo, and so thank you for considering to vote. Thank you.
This is the last call for anyone who would like to come forward and-
Mayor, I believe there's some folks waiting out in the lobby as well.
Okay. So if there are, please bring them in.
I live at 3409 Silver Spur. We're talking about life and death. You know, it's not legal to kill my neighbor, it's not legal to kill my child, it's not even legal to kill my husband, okay? It should not be legal to kill anyone. Thank you.
I've been told there are no other people in the hall to speak, and so what we will do at this point in time is I am going to adjourn for a break, for a 10-minute break, and then we will go on to the consent agenda. So it is 9:45. We will come back at 9:55 and continue with the agenda today. Thank you. Larry, and ask if he has any item that he would like pulled from the consent agenda.
No, ma'am.
Lane?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
All right, I would like to pull Item H, please. As Bob's coming forward, I will ask that a motion be made to approve all the agenda items with the exception of Item H at this point. So moved, seconded any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion consent agenda passes 7-0. Item H, consider approving an agreement with HUD in the amount of $1,110,165 as the city's allocation of the Federal American Rescue Plan, ARP, Home Investment Partnership Home Grant Funds, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Bob, you want to talk about this item?
Yes, ma'am. This is really just to get the agreement into the system. We have a lot of work to identify and approve projects. This grant is strictly for assistance to homeless and to prevent homelessness. We plan on sending out a notice of funding availability. We'll get proposals, we'll have a public meeting, we'll come to council with options and proposals for a project funding, and then we'll go from there. It is, it is tell, it's a pretty lengthy program. I think it expires 2030, so we have some time. So there's really no hurry to get it, get-
So even though the timeframe extends to 2030, it's still the same $1 million?
It is.
And so, but we have time to put together a good plan and-
Yes, ma'am.
-good action items concerning that plan.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure we think through it, take time with it, and don't hurry up and, and overreact without a good manageable plan.
Absolutely. That's our plan.
Okay. Do I have other questions for Bob from anyone on council?
I move to approve.
Move from Lucy. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Tommy. With that, is there any public comment? With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. That motion, Items H on consent agenda, is passed. We will now move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, appallants are accepted from the time limit above and must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. And I said the wrong words, "accepted." So with that being said, we will move into Item A. Consider a resolution supporting the San Angelo chapter of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People submissions of grants to the Tucker Foundation and to the San Angelo Health Foundation for funds to construct a restroom at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Park. Carl, you're on.
Yes, Carl White, Parks and Recreation Director. Adopting this resolution will show city support for grant applications from the local chapter of the NAACP for permanent restrooms at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Park. We estimate the total cost of the project to be $250,000, and-
What's that based on? The $250,000, what's that based on?
Our estimate and quotes for the restroom facility.
When was the estimate done? Because the last time we talked, we had a very old estimate, and so my question mark is, has this been updated?
Yes, it has been updated. So that includes all the site work.
Just a second. Rick, what were you saying?
I was just going to point out that the one term update is the restroom itself. Labor associated with putting those things in are very hard to estimate, so we did our-
So you still say the number's 250? Are you saying that?
Yes, but-
Well, then how do they go about applying for a grant if it's a best guess and not-
Not take bid? At the point, y'all could choose to deny that if there wasn't enough funding and send it back for raising more money.
Okay. Go ahead, Carl.
So if this resolution is adopted, the NAACP will use that, the signed resolution, for their grant applications to show the city's support. Their plan is to apply for two grants, one to the Tucker Foundation for $25,000 and one to the San Angelo Health Foundation for $225,000. The question will come up, if they get both of the grants, that's enough funding to do the project, and we can implement the project. If they don't get one of the grants, particularly the Health Foundation grant, well, it's your, if you direct us to, we'll come back to discuss this item further. If they don't get the Tucker grant, but do get the Health Foundation grant, we could probably still possibly do the project with some value engineering, but also if you want us to come back to discuss this, if they don't get the Tucker grant, we can do that as well. The resolution also commits the city to, if this, the grant funding comes in, we build the restroom, that the city takes on the operation and maintenance of these restrooms, and it's estimated at $12,000 a year.
And where would that money come from?
General fund. So it does show us a city commitment to maintain the facility.
Generally, when we have a resolution, we have something that's read as a resolution. So is there a written document, a resolution document?
I have that.
We don't generally read all the resolution documents aloud, though there's nothing that prevents us from doing that. It is included in part of the packet that's on the agenda. Would you like Carl to read it?
Yes, please.
Yes?
Please.
To begin, a resolution by the City of San Angelo, City Council, supporting the San Angelo chapter of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored Peoples, NAACP, submissions of grants for funds to construct a restroom facility at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Park, whereas there are no restroom facilities located at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Park, the park, and whereas citizens of San Angelo have requested that restroom facilities be constructed at the park, and whereas in order to fund the restroom facilities, the San Angelo chapter of the NAACP will be submitting grant applications to the Tucker Foundation and to the San Angelo Health Foundation, requesting $250,000 for the design work, site work, including installation of utilities and construction costs of the facilities, and whereas should the project be funded and constructed, the City of San Angelo would be responsible for the cost of operation and maintenance of the facilities, which is estimated to be $12,000 per year. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of San Angelo, Texas, Part One, that the City of San Angelo supports the San Angelo chapter of the NAACP's application for grant funding from the Tucker Foundation and the San Angelo Health Foundation for $250,000 for design work, site work, and construction of bathroom facilities in Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Park, and Part Two, that if the project is funded and construction is completed, the City of San Angelo agrees to fund the operation and maintenance of the facilities, passed and approved this fifth day of October 2021.
All right, so you don't have the-
Carl, I didn't quite hear that.
So Carl, you don't have the $12,000 in your budget for maintenance?
No, ma'am, but as council directs, we could move some, some funding around that's already budgeted.
And Daniel?
The only thing I have to say is that, just for clarification, it was my understanding that the restrooms are contingent on receiving those grant monies, not coming back and say, "Hey, can we get some money from the city?" So it has to be contingent on receiving the grants in order for those restrooms to go in.
That's correct, but I, I just mentioned if the council wants to revisit, if one of the grants doesn't come in, if they direct us to do so-
The resolution does not state that.
No.
I just make sure, I want to make sure that's very clear.
Understood.
My biggest concern, of course, is we, there's other neighborhood parks that we could start getting some requests for those restrooms as well. And we do have higher priorities when it comes to our CIP. So I want to make sure that if anything, that this is, if the city council does move forward, this is possibly a model that can be followed for other requests for restrooms. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that it's contingent on the grants being received.
Any other outside funding?
Would you like to talk, Harry? Yes, Lane?
Health Foundation, it's not clarified. You said $220,000.
$220,000.
$225,000.
$225,000. That's, is that inclusive or separate? You have $250,000 for Tucker Foundation.
No, $25,000 for Tucker.
$25,000 for Tucker and $225,000 for San Angelo Foundation.
I missed that, sorry. Thank you.
Total of $250,000.
Total of $250,000. Okay.
Lucy?
I just was going to move to approve.
Is there any other further questions from council, comments from council? Okay. So right now, this resolution is simply about getting the grants approved. This is not about coming back to city council. This is about approving a resolution for the organization, NAACP, to move forward and apply for the grants.
Yes, but if both grants do come in, go ahead and implement the project and then take on responsibility of operation of it.
Right, but with that, we would also have to bring back any plan and to accept a bid. All of those things would have to come back to council.
Well, the Health Foundation requires three bids. You apply for the Health Foundation, it requires three bids. That's what they get.
Well, we turn in, what we've always turned in, we can, we can get an actual bid on the restroom structure. It's prefabbed, so we can get that. The rest of it is estimates on the sewer line and those kind of things. So we'll, they'll turn in what they can and go from there, but that's the NAACP.
All right, so that does bring up a question. When you talk about $250,000, does that include the sewer and water-
Yes.
-work that needs to be done-
Yes.
-to get it in operation?
Yes.
Correct. So it's all-inclusive?
Yes.
So we're not talking about partial, we're talking all-inclusive?
Best we could plan, yes.
Okay. There is a motion by Lucy and a second by Harry. Any public comment? With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We'll move into Item B, first reading and introduction of an ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022. Tina, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina Dierski, Director of Finance. I have just one budget amendment to bring before you this morning, is to budget for the revenue that we receive through the charity care reimbursement from the state. The fire department is requesting to use those funds for, of course, the peak hours ambulance, which you approved through the budget process, and to fund a new ambulance and partially fund a new fire truck.
Any questions for Tina? With none, may I have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Lane, made a motion and seconded by Lucy. Any public comment? With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this point, we will move into closed session, the executive session under provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. A, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Regarding Sanctuary City for the Unborn. Section B, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding (1) Jay Point Event Survey 1113, Abstract 4873, J.A. Eggleston Survey Point Dash 002, Abstract 4984, and 3, Olson Subdivision. With that, we will adjourn. Yes? Oh, sure. Did I miss that during the item? Did I see you raise your hand?
Well, I think I was just too slow to get up. I just had another birthday, so I don't think I was moving as fast.
Okay, sorry. I didn't mean, sorry, I didn't see that.
Public comment. So thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm Shirley Spears, President of the San Angelo NAACP, and I am a resident of single-member district five. I wanted to comment on the resolution that was discussed and passed this morning. I want to thank the mayor and the council for moving forward with passing that. I understand your concerns, city manager, about what it is that we need to do about neighborhood parks. We've discussed that before. But I think that the discussion that we've had with a couple of the city manage, with the city manager and a couple of the council, that this is probably the best opportunity for any of the parks in San Angelo. There are several that don't have restrooms for us to use this. I think it was implied that this would be a model, and I think this is something that we do need to look at. I know that in 2019, we participated in having the park issue brought up, and we supported it being on the CIP, but it doesn't look like that's ever going to move forward. And so as an organization that has brought this forth, we are prepared to ask for the funding and certainly be all apparent with what it is that we're trying to do to get the city to provide these restrooms. We have plans to use that park. We know other residents in other areas of the city want to use their park. And of course, having restrooms is just one of those things that needs to be there. So we are prepared to support this, and if necessary, we will support others. We know that there are some other potential opportunities for adding the idea of parks to the master plan, perhaps. Further discussion will need to be had for other parks. Right now, we appreciate the resolution, and we're hopeful that we will get the grant money in both instances, from the Health Foundation and the Tucker Foundation, for the $250,000 to pass over to the city to have restrooms installed at Martin Luther King Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. With that, we will now go into our closed session, and we will return when we return, I guess. 1:50 a.m. on October the 5th. I'm going to read a statement, and then we will take an individual vote on the issue in support or not in support of this, but I propose directing the city attorney to bring to the next council meeting a proclamation supporting the right to life and supporting the Texas heartbeat bill. May I have a motion for that? So moved. May I have a second? Second. Any public comment?
And I don't have a comment but a question. What does, what does that mean, a resolution? What would that entail or mean or?
It would mean that we, as a city council, support the right to life, basically, and support the Texas and Texas's heartbeat bill, which in fact is law. support that the Texas and Texas's heartbeat bill, which in fact is law. It's the most restrictive law in a state in the United States of America.
And a resolution carries weight, then, that way?
No more than the proclamation.
Or, I mean, the proclamation would, would carry weight.
It's a strong statement.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With that-
Ma'am?
Yes.
I'm a no.
You're a no, so it's six to one. With that, the citizens under the charter have a right to form and initiate a committee to put the presented ordinance on the May ballot for a vote of the people. Do I need to vote on that?
Are we doing it individual, or are we doing all together?
We don't take a vote on this last one, we took a vote on the other one.
The one that we just did, where are we, where are we going to do individuals or?
I asked for a vote, and Larry said no, and Lane's a no, so motion passes 5-2. With that, we'll move on, on Item A, on the agenda, which is the follow-up and administrative issues. Consider and possible action regarding items disclosed in the closed session, which we just did. Discussion and consideration of City Council meetings in November and December because of the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays, but those dates haven't changed, so what are we talking about?
So typically, what we do is we meet the second, I'm sorry, the first and third Tuesdays of the month. That has no bearing on Veterans Day or Thanksgiving, other than staff time to prepare. And then December, we typically meet the second Tuesday of the month and just have one meeting. So we just need a, a direction on this so that the planning department particularly and others know what their schedule will be for publishing dates.
Well, in November, it would be the first Tuesday, which is the second, and it would be the 16th of November, and I'm not sure why there would be any issue with those dates.
No, there isn't. We just wanted to have discussions so that all the departments know that this is for sure the schedule moving forward. It just gives them some certainty with planning.
Okay, so we would do the second and the 16th as typically done. Then in December, the meetings would be on the 7th and the 21st, and the question is, do we want two meetings, or do we want one meeting? And if you want one meeting, do you want to do it on the 14th?
Mayor, I have a, I guess, a proposal for the council's consideration. Since we typically do one meeting, I'm going to suggest we look at the 7th rather than the 14th. Let's give our staff a little more time to spend throughout the holidays, and they're, they're constantly working. It would just, to me, it would seem like a nice gesture on our part to give them a little bit more downtime if we did it on the 7th as opposed to the 14th.
Daniel, do you think that gives people plenty of time to wrap up?
I really do. Thank you for the thoughtful listen. I appreciate it. I won't be here the 14th anyway, so I like that.
Okay, I'm good with the 7th. 7th, 7th.
We're going to miss you.
Is everyone in favor of the 7th for the December meeting? No objections? We'll have it on the 7th. It'll be the only city council meeting we have that month. All right, we will then move in to see an announcement and consideration of future agenda items. Are there any? With none, may I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Second, third?
Anyone opposed? With no one opposed, the meeting is adjourned.